I will go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, August eighteenth, twenty twenty to order pursuant to section three of executive order in twenty-nine dash twenty issued by Governor Newsom. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. So I will ask that our city clerk, please take role.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, now, before we move on, I just want to remind those who are calling in that your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. So, before we get to our pledge of allegiance, I would like to ask Councilmember Sternquist to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that affect so many in our community. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, if we'll all please rise for our pledge of allegiance. We've got our flag there on the screen. And place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. My pledge allegiance...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, one...
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to our ceremonial matters. There are none. And we will now move on to public comments. City council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I will begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
Here, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, and do we have anybody on the line? If anybody is on the line that wishes to speak at this time, please do so. Hearing none, I will close. Did I hear somebody? No. Okay, I will close public comments. We will now move on to item number seven, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. I would like to pull item E from the consent calendar. Has anybody else wished to pull any other items? If not, let me, let me guess. I have on my notes for any email requests to speak, but I don't know that we're taking any email requests to speak on the consent calendar. So can we have a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar other than item E?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar other than item E.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, I asked to pull this item only if staff could perhaps give us all a kind of a general overview and highlights of what we're doing here. It's something that we brought up at our last meeting regarding the banner changes that were proposed to businesses. And I think that, just want to allow staff to state the things that we're doing and how I believe that they will hopefully help our business community. So, Brian, did you want to do that, or did you want Scott to do that?
I'll start it, and then Scott, Mr. Reimers, feel free to step in if I miss something. Mayor of the province, members of the council, before you, consent calendar was an item, there was one, two things, clarification of one issue, and then two, a banner program that we think a low-cost way of helping businesses as well. First, when we did a survey of the banners that we saw throughout the city, in order to avoid some businesses from just tearing down their banners because they did not meet the specific dimensions in terms of width and length, but, you know, the size of the banner wasn't so obnoxious in the sense that it became kind of a blight. We came up, Mr. Reimers and staff came up with a formula rather about square footage. So that would allow for the flexibility for a business owner. There's a couple that I can think of in Camellia Square right now that would fall under those guidelines but still be able to keep up their banners but wouldn't fit under the previous dimensions and criteria. The next one is, you have in your staff report as well, what we'd like to do, kind of a very low-cost thing, is for those businesses that, you know, it takes some time for them to get a banner or elsewhere, they can, as part of the process, they can actually procure one or get one of the banners that we have ready to be produced with Curyo Printing, who we've been using for a lot of the signage that you've been seeing in and around town. So we're still tweaking some of that as well, but some of that is, will be ready to go in the next, by the early part of September. And then for those businesses who would request that, you would waive the temporary banner fee, and then they could be provided with the generic, open-for-business banner.
So the attachment to our report, is that just a concept, or is that a final, or how we...
It's like ninety-five percent there.
Okay, and do we, we don't have a way of showing it, do we?
Uh, I can, Peggy or Jillian?
That's all right, it's fine, I mean, anybody, yeah, so, that's not the one I have, though. TC is, I have, I guess, or maybe the one we have is not, yeah, it's a little different from that, but there's a one we have in ours, it says "open for business", and then it has our little Temple City logo on the right-hand corner.
Um, so, could we pull that staff report up, Peggy or Jillian? These are the banners that would go up and down the street. And then I'll wait just a moment to see if staff can bring them up.
And while you're getting that, the only other question, the only thing I also wanted to point out is that I believe that the restrictions still are in place regarding covering any windows or things like that, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Right, so even though that the banner size has been changed, nothing else really substantially has been changed?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct, Mr. Reimers? Just, there was one other recommendation in the staff report, and that's to allow business to have up two banners. If, for those businesses that already have a banner up, we wanted them also to be able to put up this banner proposal here.
Yeah, okay, good. So, yeah, that's good.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
See, now that we saw the one that is attachment A is what's in our package, but I was gonna ask, did TC is open for business, that long banner? Is that like a street banner that we're proposing to hang on a main street?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
But that wouldn't necessarily be on a business location. That would just be something that we would use to promote the entire business community.
Right, and we're trying to stay, and I think, and staff has done a good job with Curyo Printing as well, a very consistent, clean look. I think I sent, so I sent you today some of the signage that Mr. Matsumoto and his team did at the parks to provide a clean, consistent look across the board, which has been something that we're trying to get across from a branding standpoint, too. So, and they've been relatively inexpensive, so.
Good, good. All right, well, thank you very much for that. Any further questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion regarding item E.
A move that we approve.
Give a second. Sorry, good. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that. And now we will move on to our public hearing. There is none. Item number nine, unfinished business, there is none this evening. And now we will move on to item number ten, which is the COVID-nineteen Business Continuity Plan. So, turn that over to our city manager for discussion.
Very brief discussion, Mayor Chavez. Before you tonight is really kind of a celebratory document in a certain way, and I don't mean that in a glib manner. It really kind of captures what the council has done on the policy side, what the staff has done on the implementation and program side, and how we kind of see things moving forward. So, this is here for your perusal tonight, and if you have any questions on it, if you think we've missed something there. I think we tried to do a really comprehensive approach of looking. You receive from Mr. Azumi every other day, or twice a week, a situational update, which deals with the immediacy of the event and kind of the immediate actions and some of the facts that are on the ground related to this event. This kind of takes us a step further from an operational standpoint as well, so that it's memorialized for not only staff and the council, but also the community, to show how we're dealing with the crisis now and some of the things we're looking forward on a go-forward basis. We kind of touched upon it in the budget document. I think this kind of takes a more, even a broader, but also deeper look at what we're doing operationally. And I must say that I'm very proud to be associated with an organization in the city and the council and staff that have really taken on this crisis with the seriousness, concern, and empathy and compassion that we have, and still providing a level of service to the community. It has been an amazing feat from the policy standpoint, from the council side, and the implementation standpoint by the staff on a program side. So I think that's what this document is, it does. And what we would do in the next sixty days is come back with some more detailed reporting on some of the things we've done. I know I provide with you with some other reports that you receive. This would be one that kind of goes out to the public and gives a sense of, you know, what we're doing programmatically with some of the initiatives here. So, that's it. Thank you to Mr. Haworth. Thank you to the entire staff and team who put this together, and we all worked as a team together to make this work, or put this document together. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you. We'll begin with council questions. I'll begin with Councilmember Mann.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor Chavez. So, I guess I just have a general question. In reading through all the, all the entire outline for this Business Continuity Plan, this simply serves as an overall framework in which I guess we're operating under. So we could kind of add this to, I guess, our other plans that we have currently. I know we recently had adopted the Economic Recovery Plan, which I suppose would be a subset of this. Is that correct?
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Mann, yes. So the Economic Recovery Plan, the Economic Development and Recovery Plan is enveloped into this. That's correct.
Okay. And could you maybe give us a little bit of preview in terms of what, when you say, when you say staff will be reporting back to council on these? I mean, there's a lot of stuff on, so I'm just trying to maybe better get a better feel. I guess you'll only be reporting, I guess, specific items that are for that moment? Is this going to be an ongoing reporting thing? Like, are we going to hear about this on a quarterly basis? Is there any thoughts on how that's going to play out?
We initially want to come back sixty days, but probably quarterly or as needed in terms of specific items that are there, just referencing the plan, but also kind of coming back to with them. So, in sixty days, we would come back with some more detail on the reporting with all the things that we've done within the plan, but also to then schedule it on a quarterly basis.
Okay, and just one last question is, I know embedded within the plan, there are some items regarding how we have to kind of be flexible and budget on an ongoing basis depending on the situation and what type of programs we're running. But in terms of the budget that was adopted during this fiscal year, would you say there would need to be a lot of changes to the existing budget to meet the goals of these plans, or do you expect there to be not so much?
That's another good question, and let me reference. We'll be coming back on September fifteenth. Thank you to staff real quick for reminding me. And then every thirty days afterwards through this pandemic. So to answer your question, though, Councilmember Mann, I'm gonna, we're gonna have a good idea of what this event has meant to us in, for the summer, probably in mid-October, with our sales tax numbers being the primary indicator. Ms. Pagaras and I, you know, she is closing out fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And preliminarily, I can say that we will be in a surplus position and actually potentially not even touching fund balance, which is going to be a huge accomplishment, but we need to close those books. So, but what this means over the summer is still to be seen. But I think what we've done, and I think what staff has done in developing and be providing general guidance to them on this, is providing something that's realistic with the projects that we can do and the initiatives that we can still do on a go-forward basis. Most of those projects that you see either are grant-funded or special, are proprietary funds or subvention funds that are not general fund-driven. And for those projects that we have completed, either we know we have enough room in the operating budget of those special funds to be able to complete those projects. For example, Las Tunes, the bid will be coming in actually tomorrow for those initiatives. I think we're comfortable in general, but that's why kind of the more frequent, and thank you to staff for reminding me of that, more frequent reporting back is to kind of keep you up to date in a more frequent manner to say, hey, we, here's what's happening economically, here's what this event has changed, and we need to, we need council's feedback as to what we should adjust.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions for staff?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Yu?
Yeah, just one simple question. I take it once we approve this plan, Mr. City Manager, you're gonna put it on our website?
Great idea.
I think, you know, really congratulations for great work. And I think that's something that I think our citizens should be able to see. That's what the city's been doing. We haven't been like shut down as somebody might have thought. We've been busy doing a lot of things, and I think this is a great document to be out there.
Thank you for that compliment, sir. Thank you for that compliment, and that is reflective of all the city's staff work. And thank you for your policy leadership as well from the council.
Okay, one of your, one of your topics is service delivery. And under service delivery, you have item sixteen, position governance to remote meetings, okay? And then it talks about training local officials and staff on video conferencing technology, recommend ongoing technology, include a telephonic option for the community. My question is, and this goes to several comments and requests that I've gotten from the public, is that apparently the school district is having their meetings where the public can participate on the video conference as well. However, we do not allow that apparently through our system. And I'm wondering if there's been any thought given to that? Is there technology that would allow the public so that we could perhaps see who's talking? And the only reason I bring that up is, I don't know about the rest of you, but it doesn't appear that we have had anybody participate in any of the council meetings for at least two months. I have, every time I open it up for public comments, it's complete silence. And to me, it appears to me that we are not engaging our community. We are not getting them to our meetings either because they simply can't do it or they simply don't find the medium to be effective. And if we can't do that, then it kind of takes away from what we are doing as a council, I think. And so I would, and again, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I would like at least for some thought to be given to, how can we get the community more engaged in our meetings? And, you know, what is, what is, with the technology that we have, what is the best way of doing that? Because it seems that, it seems that we are holding our council meetings kind of in silence. Nobody joins. Nobody listens in, or at least nobody at least talks. I've run into that with my classes at PCC, and there's been some studies that indicate that, I guess, there's people that just aren't comfortable using this type of medium or listening or talking or even asking questions. And so I don't know, maybe that's the general problem out there. But it would be nice to hear from the public a little bit more, but obviously you can't force them if they don't want to do it. The second, not so much a question, and perhaps I should leave that to our comments at the end, but I'll go ahead and ask it now. I'm not, I'm not too wild about the title that you've given to this. It says COVID-nineteen Business Continuity Plan. I think that can, one, be kind of misconstrued, and also I think it doesn't give credit to the things that we are actually doing in this plan because it doesn't just relate to the businesses. And we've heard a couple of references in the discussion about this is for the community. And so I'm thinking maybe we should retitle this Community Continuity Plan or something that would make it really identify what this is. And that is, it's not simply a business, it's not simply an economic, it's not simply a service delivery plan. It's so much more than that. I mean, there are so many items listed on here from citizen engagement, financial solvency. I think we're selling ourselves short with the titled Business Continuity Plan. But again, that's kind of my personal feeling about that. Perhaps, you know, I think, I think that title doesn't give just reward to the work that staff has put into this. And then lastly, this, is there anything on this list of things that we haven't done? Because it seems to me, in looking at the list, these are all the things that we have done. There's, is there anything here that we're still planning to do, or, I mean, this...
Yes, this is a living document. So that's why, again, we're reporting back to you on a frequent basis. We'll provide for adjustments depending on resources and other things as well. And some of it, like the Economic Development Plan that's embedded in it, you know, some of the things we've done, some of the things we're in progress with.
Okay, so, so you're gonna, so in the report, I think William kind of asked about this before. So, in the, in the reports, you'll report out on some of these items that they've changed or developed in some way? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay. Let me go ahead and open up public comment. I will ask the city clerk if there are any public comment emails received on this matter?
No, Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Thank you. And I will ask you to unmute the microphones. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to verbally respond to this item, now is the time to do so. Again, complete silence. I will now close public comments. Okay, so we are now to council questions and last comments. Councilmember Mann, any final comments on this matter?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I do want to say I'm happy that we have put together a document such as this. And I appreciate Mr. Corbett's remarks about this being a living document because I believe that no document stays static, especially in the situation we're in. If I may be bold to say, I view this as almost like a replacement of our previous strategic plan discussions that we had three years ago. I mean, this is essentially for the entirety of what we as a city provide in terms of services to the community and how those processes are changing because of COVID-nineteen. So in my mind, when I was reading it, I thought of it more as an update to our strategic plan, that that's very relevant and to the present ordeal. If we dive into specific elements, first of all, I like that at the very top of it is citizen engagement. I think that absolutely deserves to be at the front of. I would add, we've mentioned this in the past, Mayor Chavez and I have brought it up, but, you know, Citizens Academy thing that we had many years ago, and that was one of the, one of the primary vehicles of citizen engagement that we had. And we had great feedback from almost everyone who went through that. So I would suggest as an addition to this is to include a variation of that as part of citizen engagement, similar to how with number two of that says "go virtual". So a lot of these programs, we do have the foundational material for delivering that type of citizen engagement already. It's a matter of putting that together, updating it, make it relevant to the current state. And putting things on virtual makes it very accessible for anybody, especially now that a lot of people are either mostly at home, or we hope they are. I also want to just come, staff across the board, because we as a council have some of these items already developed. So I would say kudos to the creativity of our staff in adapting, like, for example, a lot of our parks and rec programming to integrate and bring out this, you know, creating get-out-of-the-home opportunities, going virtual, that type of thing. I also do like the part about referencing the implementation of recommendations from our committee on, I know that's a committee that we've established two years ago, and they've been meeting regularly and coming up with updates and recommendations. But now in the current COVID environment, I think that those types of discussions are more relevant than ever. I also want to... I also want to encourage us to also lean heavily on, let's see, one, one of the items public information. I know we have multiple social media arms that we use to broadcast information. However, I would encourage us to build even more upon that. I, I would say as a constructive criticism for all of us is, I believe we have a lot of information that is valuable and useful for our residents to know and that we can be regularly sending out updates about that. One example is I know our city manager prepares a regular weekly report. I would say that, I would say that many items within that report that's for the can actually be broadcasted as social media blasts. And I'm not saying just blast org in itself because, you know, people don't like clicking through multiple links and having to read too many things, right? So the point of social, social media is you condense topics into something that people can read in under thirty seconds. And so there's a lot of different things that we have out there that, you know, we're aware of because, you know, being on council, we get all this information. But a lot of times I'm thinking, hey, that would make a really quick, easy, sweet social media post. And, and I think a lot of people would, would actually appreciate it. So I would encourage us to maybe find ways to, to develop and build, build upon that. Other than that, my remarks by saying, I, I do want to reemphasize the, the, my earlier comment about the need for regular updates and for us to be, for us also to understand how the new programs or the adaptation of existing programs fit in and align with current council policies and objectives. Um, I, I know that's something that we discussed during the budget discussion and adoption. But to me, this seems like another way for you to integrate council policy directly into these specific programs and items that, that we're developing. And in fact, um, many of us may have kind of forgotten because we were so used to it now. You know, every single step or written at the bottom, there's a, there's a specific action that ties in directly to the strategic plan, good governance, so on and so forth. There's another opportunity for you to kind of reinforce that we're actually carrying out and developing this, um, this plan. How does each staff report, how does each action item relate back to one of these that's in the outline? And in some ways that allows us to kind of keep ourselves accountable that there's a plan, but we're actually executing it. And here's a metric by which we're measuring how we're delivering on these items. And I say that because I don't want us to simply adopt the plan and just have it sit on a shelf. It just kind of exists in, in sort of in the, in the peripheral manner. So I'm, I'm very excited about this and, and, and looking forward to all the developments that, that, uh, you and Mr. Cook and the entire city staff is going to be. And one last note, I do agree, I, I just want to concur with Mayor Chavez's about the, our city council meetings being broadcast on live. Actually wasn't fully aware that while we've been meeting participants, we can see each other. So, you know, I could see Mayor Chavez, I could see him talking, I could see Mayor Protem you speaking and getting but for the general public that's tuning in, they just see a portrait of us on their screen. So it's almost like joint and, and audio presentation. So I agree that I think there is a certain intangible element to being able to see the other person speak. This case, us being the officials, I think there is a sense that the public could maybe perhaps gain, gain a better sense of engagement and be able to see us actually make comments and ask questions and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Sturquist, any final comments? Your mic, Cindy.
Um, I echo everything that William said, thank you to the staff, I think it's a great plan. Especially in this time to take a look at everything that we're doing so that it is a, a living document that'll fluctuate just that and can be flexible as we move forward. Um, I'm not so much in agreement with having the video camera made available to the public. I probably spend about, I'm going to say at least eight hours a week on five different Zoom meetings and they come in all shapes and sizes. And oftentimes the Zoom meeting with all the people can be distracting for a myriad of, of different reasons. Sometimes there's pets coming into the picture, mine included. You know, it, it, it just runs the gamut. In South Pasadena, there was an article that was written about Diana Mahmood. And it was really negative and it was one of their first Zoom meetings that they had as a city council meeting. And it was, you know, can't, almost to the degree of can she go and get her hair dyed because it's so gray? I mean, it was just belittling. And there's been some other situations also where the Zoom meetings were actually, I mean, the, the council people were held to this standard that you probably shouldn't even blow your nose while you're sitting in front of the camera. So I mean, and I, I, I'm just not that comfortable with it. And it's not that I do anything that I probably want to do at a council meeting. But I also don't think that being on a video is going to make anyone more engaged. And I don't think that because we don't hear a lot from the public doesn't mean that they're not listening and that they're not engaged. Because I get emails frequently and I pass those along to our city manager. And he takes care of them, of, of them. So I don't think that our public isn't engaged. I just think that we're doing such a great job of, you know, having the city continue to run the way it did prior to COVID-19. People just, you know, and let me give you another example is people are overwhelmed with being on Zoom right now, trying to get their kids online. They're tired. The school district people, if you listen to, you know, just the, I can't think of what it's called, the home thing where people call in or they can write in. A lot of the comments are, I am so tired of being on Zoom all day with my kids and trying to make this technology work that a council meeting probably is, you know, very difficult for them to spend another two hours or an hour and a half on it on the evening. But I don't think people are not engaged. I, I think the opposite, I think people are extremely engaged in what we're doing in our city and I think we'd be hearing about it. There were a couple of issues that were very complicated and we did have people calling in. I don't think having us be on video is going to make people more interested in, in what we're doing. I think they're going to be, like most people say, everybody's looking at the backgrounds to see, you know, who has pictures in the background analyzing. I think in South Pasadena, they were analyzing the mayor's background that she had this huge picture. I just don't know, understand what the purpose is. I don't think being on a Zoom meeting makes me any less or more engaged than if someone can hear the meeting. As a matter of fact, in the city of Arcadia, I was talking to one of their council members today and she told me that they don't even see each other on their council members. They just directly call in. And that their meetings have been very engaged because they've had some development issues that have really engaged the public. And so they have a lot of public comment. They have a lot of people calling in. I think that it depends on what's going on in the city. I don't think we have anything major right now that people are really calling in about. I don't think it's because we haven't tried to engage them. Those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Uh, council member Viscar.
Yeah, I would echo a lot of the things that, that William said and that Cynthia said. And I'm harkening back to old experiences. And I remember so often we would have council meetings when, I mean, week, every two weeks where, remember the Marys would show up? And, and one or two other, I don't want to use the word dad fly, but folks that had those kinds of interests. Unless, unless there, there was a big issue at, at state. So I don't, I don't know why this would be that much different. Right now, I think there's a perception and Cindy mentioned this, that the city is, is functioning well. And I don't think there's any reason to think it's not. And, and so there, there's not a concern. And the other thing is, I don't think that many people are that comfortable going online and trying to figure out how to get to us. What avenues do they actually have besides the, uh, the community services channel? How, how can people see us?
They, so as we're speaking right now, there's a probably about two or three second delay so between on the YouTube channel. But as I'm speaking right now, my face is, my picture is up with my title and the, the item that's being discussed. Or people can call into the, uh, the telephone number and listen to us live as well. We do, I, I see that we do have a caller um, listening in right now directly. So there's those ways of engagements. The third way is during the meeting.
Let me stop you a minute. How do people know the YouTube channel exists, the access of?
Uh, on our agendas and on, uh, on our website are links to, to, uh, the YouTube channel.
Oh, and that's what that is, okay, I didn't know.
Yep, yes, sir.
Yeah. Those, those are kind of my comments. Hot, it, it's like the newspapers trying to increase readership. And they're having a heck of a time with it. What a picture.
I know, it's frightening, isn't it? But what are you going to do?
It's good, it's good. Oh, even better. That was a lot of years ago, too. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem you?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I think the name Business Continuity Plan is probably commonly used in businesses for, um, what they really meant is how they conduct their normal business in a continuous manner. So it is really referred to city business. So, but I do agree with you, that might be a little misleading for others who are, may not be familiar with it. And, um, so calling it services, city services, continuity plan might, might be more helpful perhaps to some folks. So I agree with you, Mayor, that might be a bit misleading. As far as, um, the video conferencing during city council meetings, I am with council member Sturquist, I think having us show bedrooms or where, or wherever we are, may be a bit distracting and, and, um, our bedrooms, our houses are really not set up for this kind of video conferencing. I, I know last week we talked to, last time we talked to the city school district and they said that, you know, perhaps they can provide the classroom so that the teacher can do their video teaching. And I think it's really the same thing because not every one of us have the luxury of having a place without any other disturbance. And, and that could be a distraction. And on the other hand, for, um, our residents to show their faces, I think number one, I mean, learning how to call in is hard enough. Uh, learning how the video in as a resident, I think is even more difficult. And also it could be a, a, in turn, in kind of intimidating for, for the residents to show their house. And the other thing that I thought was it may create certain equality problems. Let's say I, for whatever reason, as a resident who is not very good with technology, I could not show my faces, the best I could do was call in. But yeah, does that mean that I have less influence on the city council? Because I, I, the other person can show their faces and I couldn't. So I, I personally don't think there's any issue with what we, where we are right now. Other jurisdictions have been doing different things. Um, I know LA County Board Supervisors, they do something very similar to what we do. I also have been on some city, LA City Zoom meetings. And, um, to the point of council member Sturquist, there were times where we were only looking at somebody's belly button or the belt. And it was truly distracting and the person didn't really even realize the camera is pointing the wrong way. Because sometimes not everybody can see what they're projecting. So, um, I think what we have is just fine. I, I don't think we need to go to the, um, to bring video in or out. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. And, um, by my earlier comments, I did not intend to mean that we necessarily had to go to videos. Somehow it got off onto that tangent, but my, my, my point was that somehow we need to try to perhaps get our community more engaged as they were prior to the fact, the time we went on to this remote video. Uh, another, another couple of things that were said regarding the backgrounds, and I understand and completely agree that inviting someone into your home may not be comfortable for, for a lot of us. I think that's one of the disadvantages and, uh, limits that, uh, go-to meeting has versus Zoom. On a Zoom, we can use virtual backgrounds. And in fact, I would even say that somehow somebody could probably come up with a way to provide a virtual background for us, let's say the city council chambers, which would be kind of nice. You know, any techie out there, I'm sure somebody could come up with that, that technology even on the go-to meeting. But go-to meeting I found to be very limited. I know that most, this is the only medium that I've used outside of Zoom. And I found Zoom to be certainly a lot more, it's a lot easier to use, a lot easier to hook up to and don't seem to have many of the problems that we have on go-to meeting. And looking at the list, I did not see, and, and given the fact that we just had our joint meeting with the Unified School District, Temple City Unified School District, I don't see anything in here regarding, uh, continuing or working with the district and other community partners. And I don't know if that should be, um, and maybe someone can point that out to me, maybe I just missed it. But I think, um, part of our continuity plan, I think, has always been to work with others who have a stake in the community, including our school district and, um, and perhaps other groups or organizations. I would, I would like to see, uh, something perhaps added to the list that recognizes the importance of those partnerships and the, and the continuing use and, and ways of perhaps helping each other out in that regard. Let's see. Uh, I had a question on the YouTube. So what exactly does the public see on YouTube? Obviously, I, I've never, I've never looked at one. I, I'm assuming that since they're on YouTube, someone could go back like tomorrow and watch this meeting? So, so, so if all they're seeing is, is my, my photo that I took.
Who you right now, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I see, I see it. So, so that's what they see on YouTube is, is my photo ten years ago? That comes up when I talk, is that, is that, is that the YouTube?
Yes, sir.
And we can hear you speak as well.
Okay, yeah, they can hear. So that's not really much of an improvement over So that's not really much of an improvement over just listening in on, on the audio, is it? I mean.
It's kind of false advertising.
In fact, yeah. In fact, one may say that's more of a detriment than a plus to look at an old photo of, of me, especially Fernando's. That was probably taken, what, forty years ago or something? I don't know.
Long time ago.
So, I, I, I don't know what the YouTube thing is all about. That, that, to me, that, I mean, is that just another medium to see people could link, look into it rather than, I guess, log on to our meeting, correct? Is that the idea?
It's no different than when we are meeting in person and people can stream the, the uh, meeting as well. They can stream it on YouTube, watch it live with a slight couple second delay.
They watch it live though. They don't see a photo.
They can wa- they can wa- they can watch it live right now, then it's archived.
Well, they can hear it live. They can't watch anything, they're only hearing something on YouTube.
They, yes, they can listen to, they can listen to it live and um, see the graphics that we put on, including the council member pictures, what item is being discussed. And then whatever presentation that we provide to you in this medium, that also comes up as well. So, for example, Mr. Matsumoto gave a presentation on Hermos Park update. That same presentation you saw was uh, was, was mirrored on the YouTube channel as well. Um, Amir and Red Idiot and Travis and the whole team are behind the scenes doing all of that production to synchronize that so that the community is essentially seeing what you're seeing. There's nothing that they're not seeing that they, that, that you're not, that you're seeing that the community is not seeing. Either from a agenda or the.
All right, that's a plus. And I, I don't, you may have mentioned earlier that the link to YouTube or the information on YouTube is on the agenda. I don't see it anywhere on the agenda, is it? Is that uh, am I missing something? I don't see any information about going to YouTube on the agenda or how they go ahead and do that. I only see access codes and phone numbers.
So if that's the case, then I misspoke about what's on the agenda, and we can include that in the future.
Yeah, maybe we should try to include that. Um, how they get to YouTube and, and able to at least view things rather than just listening in like on a telephone call. I think that would probably be very helpful.
Mr. Mayor, this is, Mr. Mayor, this is Greg Murphy. Ac- actually, at the, at, at the end of the sentence, it, it does say uh, you can listen through the city's live webcast, click here. And then that is a, is a link.
Is that, is that, is that mean YouTube?
I believe so. I, I think, you know, it can be clearer about where that link will take you. But it, it is the city's live webcast, which instead of running it uh, on the city's website, it would link over to YouTube.
Okay, but you have to first go to the Temple City's website? Or can you? Okay, well, first of all, you have to go to the city's website.
How would you get that point?
You have to, you have to go to the city's website to see the agenda. And then when you get to the agenda, you'll see this, and then there's a click here thing. And that click here gets them to the YouTube broadcast.
Correct.
All right, well, if that's the case, maybe for those who are not as computer savvy, you might want to spell that out a little clearer and actually use the term YouTube, or maybe can we do that? I mean.
We can do that, and we can include the uh, we can.
I mean, I don't know if there's any legalities there about using the term YouTube on anything, but, you know.
Uh, may I just try to, it take me about four clicks to get to uh, the live stream.
Yeah, yeah, I'm afraid that it's uh, it's, 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 and, and that's assuming that you can get to it uh, in the first place, so.
Well, we, 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 we're talking, and we, what we can create is like a vanity URL. That's a very simple, straightforward one that we can create, have it on the website, have it on the agenda. Um, staff and I, we'll staff and I, staff, we have a staff meeting tomorrow. We'll walk through it together and see what we can do to improve that.
Yeah, I, I, I just think whatever we can do to make it easier on the public, uh, I think will be a plus, so. Okay, uh, Michael, go ahead, yes Fernando?
I think you need to have somebody in there that's at least over fifty to, to see if it translates to them. And I, I only say it half jokingly, cause there's, that's a truism.
Well, as I said, we need to make it uh, as easy as possible, so. Okay, uh, if there's no other further comments, uh, I will entertain a motion on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the COVID nineteen. This is continuity plan. And then um, direct staff return to the council on September fifteen with a staff report. And also uh, perhaps suggest a different name for the uh, continuity plan for the council to consider.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could please take a roll call.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Vizara?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Hey, thank you for that. Uh, we will now move on to item eleven, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, members of the council. I'll be brief tonight. Um, we have had a successful run of Parks and Recreation programming uh, over the summer. Um, congratulations to the staff who have done a really great job of being creative uh, and a real team effort between Parks and Recreation, Management Services, Communications, and everybody in terms of uh, really helping each other out and, and making this a real success. So, congratulations to all of them. Um, the two uh, drive-in movies sold out. Um, Campapalooza had a good turnout with the programming, and the feedback related to the programming was very uh, constructive and positive as well. So, kudos to Mr. Matsumoto, uh, Mr. Hallworth, Ms. Chan, um, uh, Jordy, Veronica, Mr. Lawson, uh, uh, Roman, everybody, just a great, and all the staff behind the scenes as well. Great job together and colle- and um, working and, and putting in a, a lot of effort to put those things together. So, thank you. Uh, there'll be a little break for a little while as we roll into our fall programming and adjust as well going forward. Um, in terms of uh, uh, thank you to work for the school district for working with us on graduation and book pickups over the last uh, couple of weeks. Uh, Mr. Arizumi as well, for all of his work in coordinating all of those efforts. Um, one other thing I haven't touched upon in the past as well is that uh, with how we have reopened City Hall in a very cautious manner, um, the amount of ensuring the staff and the public have enough protection as they, as they come into City Hall during appointments only. Um, you know, and, and the concern, we have provided staff with more than enough PPE and um, and working through the next few months and planning for this event to go out many more months farther uh, in stockpiling. And um, credit to all the field staff, Mr. Arizumi and others for really planning well in terms of our inventory and how, how we are properly not hoard, but not stockpiling what's going on. So, congratulations, well, well done on their part. Um, with the heat wave that has happened, um, one of the questions that's been asked is, does the city receive advanced notice as to when a brownout will occur? And the answer to that unfortunately is no. We, we essentially get the same information that you do as a public. If you are tied into many of the Edison um, notifications, we'll receive that timely inform, that information about the same time you will as a member of the public. So, um, what Mr. Arizumi has been trying to do is trying to tie some NICSAL alerts to general areas where we know the maps have, and, and they're publicly identified on the Edison website of where uh, blackouts may occur or, and um, power down, and power going down may occur for a period of time. But unfortunately, we do not receive any advanced notice of, of that. So, try to do our best to inform and engage, but that's where we are. And how long this lasts over the next few more, a couple days, we'll, 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 we'll continue to do our best. Um, that's it for me, uh, thank you, Mayor Chavez.
To our update for our city attorney.
Uh, one brief update. Late last week, the Ninth Circuit issued a decision on the Federal Communications Commission's small cell and moratorium order. The FCC had attempted to take away all discretion from local jurisdictions in the rollout of five G. Uh, the Ninth Circuit gave us at least a little bit back saying that we could have subjective aesthetic standards. Uh, the FCC had said that all standards related to the rollout of five G had to be objective, um, which would essentially eliminate aesthetic standards. Under the Ninth Circuit's ruling, uh, we can bring some aesthetics back into how we allow five G to be rolled out in the city. As everyone knows, it takes a high, high number of small cells placed, you know, in, 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 one right after the other throughout the city to make this work. Um, so the aesthetics will change, but uh, we can have some control. I'll be talking with Mr. Remers about it and seeing uh, what the, what our ordinance currently says and, and how we wish to update that. And we'll bring that back to you when the time is right. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, now we will move on to item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Is there anybody that's had any meetings that they would like to report out on? Hearing none. We will now move on to item fourteen, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. And I'll start with Councilmember Sternquist.
And mute. Okay, um, I, I don't know if all of you received the Edison report last night at close to two AM, I think? Or um, letting us know that the, um, I forget what they call it, but that, that window of time where we might have a blackout had ended. So, if you had signed up for notifications through Edison, you received a phone call at about one fifty-three AM, which is a little frightening to get a call at that time, not to mention if you didn't have air conditioning and you finally fell asleep. I know not everybody has air conditioning or air conditioning that work, maybe works well. Um, was awoken by that phone call last night. I spoke to um, Jeffrey Lee, who works for Edison, and he happened to see a post on um, Jerry Jamdaisian's Facebook that stated that how would he be able to stop getting those notifications? And so Jeffrey called his, I believe it's his supervisor, and they have now decided to not on a nightly basis, update people by calling them, which is a good thing, and they will only do it now once a week. So, I just wanted to let those who possibly are listening or are going to listen by YouTube at a future date, that there is a website where you can um, go into and say that you don't want to be notified anymore, but then you're not notified of anything. So, they're trying to tweak the program so that you can opt out of the late night notifications, but still get notifications during the day that there would be a possible blackout in your area. So, at least for now, residents shouldn't be getting another notification early in the morning until possibly the end of this week. So, um, other than that, I really don't have anything. Just want to continue to thank staff for um, the great job. I received so many Facebook messages, um, just sharing that the Moody Night at the Parks were just so welcomed and just such a nice uh, place for people to go feel safe and get out of the house. And I'm wondering, Brian, are, are we gonna plan any more of those since they were so successful?
Uh, thank you, thank you for, thank you for that feedback, uh, Councilmember Sternquist. Um, we'll talk, I'll talk with Mr. Matsumoto and see what we can try to do. Yeah, that was, it was successful, and um, as long as we are meeting the county health order guidelines, I think we'll explore that option.
Okay, and I had a request that a couple people asked me that are closer to my age to put in that they'd love to see grease at the park. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Vizara?
Well, um, I got the same kind of feedback on, on the movies. I think I mentioned to Brian when I talked to him earlier. But I get it from, we walk our dogs every night, and you get to know everybody that lives in your area when you do that, especially, well, never mind, I was gonna say about cleaning up the mess they make. But um, I got a lot of good feedback from, in person, from, from uh, our citizens. Uh, secondly, oh, uh, Cindy, the, what you were mentioning about Edison?
Yes.
I, I get the, the notifications on three different properties. And they, they let me know ahead of time that, that a blackout is coming, as well as, what do they call it, a pricing event or something?
I forget what it's called. Does anybody know what it's called?
I, I think what it means is that they charge you more if you use electricity during those hours. I don't know, I, that's what I surmise. But anyway, I get those messages. Um, the other thing is I was driving back from my daughter's town, Temple City Boulevard, and I noticed a big old line at uh, Temple City High School. And it looked like a COVID testing kind of line, but I don't know what it was. Does anybody know?
That was the students picking up uh, materials, getting ready for the school, for the school year.
Oh, is that what it was? Yeah, they're lined up all, all the way out to the street. And that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Thank you. Um, I, I too have gotten a lot of great feedback about how our Parks and Rec uh, programs have been adapting. I know the, the drive-in theater was, was quite a hit, so I, I would definitely be excited to see us um, explore that more, more of- often, especially um, summer's coming to an end, but doesn't mean that type of programming has to necessarily stop. Um, and speaking of going virtual, um, I know we're going to have or try to host our first virtual neighborhood watch meeting, I believe this Thursday, like at six PM. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about that. I know we've been talking about it for, for some time and um, looking forward to see how it goes. And hopefully it goes well, we learn uh, areas that we might be able to improve in on that end. And I, I really think, you know, I am kind of biased with my background with the neighborhood watch groups, but um, I do think there's a lot of great information uh, that's shared. Uh, and I think our deputies do a great job um, in presenting that information. I know this, Mr. Arizumi um, spends a lot of time putting that stuff together. So, much appreciation to the entire city team for, for bringing that to fruition. And other than that, um, uh, everyone's healthy, because we're, we're still, we're still plodding through this, this pandemic together.
Hey, thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too echo one of my fellow council members that has that, that um, I too uh, have received um, very positive comments from constituents. Um, they're happy that the city service is being provided and, and everything's well run. Um, personally, I've been to City Hall uh, once or twice, and I'm very happy to see that we actually do have the uh, some um, uh, the, the um, thermometer, I guess, or, or, or that, that checks your temperature. And I wish I had that in my work. Um, but uh, so I'm impressed uh, with the way staff and the city manager have been preparing for the pandemic and reacting to it as, as well. And um, so, very happy.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I think a big congratulations needs to go out to Councilmember Mann and his wife Helen on the birth of their son Jacob. So, uh, congratulations to both of you. Hope everyone is doing well and uh, and uh, good to be a new daddy again. And uh, get to go through all those experiences again. Uh, get to go through all those experiences again.
Yeah, this, this five-year thing is, uh, make, you, you forget a lot of things.
Well, congratulations and, uh, best of health to everyone, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So congratulations also to, as mentioned earlier, the Temple City High School class of twenty twenty finally had their graduation ceremony. It was a, a drive-by ceremony. I, the school had a great setup for cars driving in, uh, they were kind enough to invite me to participate and, uh, had a great setup, uh, where all the students came in their caps and gowns and had a chance to get their, their degree, uh, with social distancing, of course, and everyone was wearing masks, and it was, it was a really good event. It was a long event. It was, uh, actually started around two thirty and went till about eight o'clock. So it took a while to get them all through that system, but, but it worked. And I just want to give a big shout out to, as, uh, as, uh, our city manager, Brian Cook, alluded to earlier, to Brian Arizumi and our sheriffs for assisting with traffic control, uh, if you drove down Temple City Boulevard that evening, it was August seventh on a Friday night, uh, uh, you saw a big line of cars there as well going in, and that was what it was, but they did a great job and and I thought it, it went off without a hitch, actually. I didn't hear any, anything that happened negatively, so. It was a good, good joint effort by the, again, by the city and the school district, so thanks for all that. Um, and that's it for tonight. Uh, I just want to, you know, make sure everyone stays safe, stay healthy. Of course, and, uh, yes, yes, Brian?
I neglected two, two things, if, if, if I can.
Sure, of course, go ahead.
Uh, real quickly, sorry, thank, councilmember Mann brought it up. The registration for neighborhood watch is still open. We have essentially an unlimited amount of participants. I think it's up to five hundred or so, or three hundred. Um, so we can, we can host, if we're, we're going to, we use a go-to, uh, seminar. It's the same platform, but it, it's a little bit different in terms of a seminar-type format and can, uh, pose questions, but we are not bound by the normal, uh, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty people. We can have several hundred people at that event. Um, so just thank you for reminding me I neglected to do that. The other thing I neglected to point out too is, is the great job that community development has done in providing electronic plan check, um, and doing all of the developmental service, development services stuff essentially online, even though we are providing appointments for those who don't have the capabilities or, or, or them in the development community are working through those. But, um, since day one, uh, have done a great job with the appointment schedules, the plan checks submitted online and everything else, which has kept things moving along. And I do, you know, you see my report to you of plan checks submitted and everything else. And so much of that is due to the leadership of Mr. Remers and staff providing that mechanism for them to do that. So I, sorry, I meant, forgot to mention that as well. So, thank you. Thanks for indulging me.
Uh, you brought up one, one, uh, question on my mind about neighborhood watch, uh, for mentioning it, um. So on that meeting, um, how is that going to be conducted? Is that, is that going to be similar to our council meetings where we're going to be able to see the presenters and then the people who log in, are they going to uh, be on there as well where we can see them? So, so for example, if I go in to the meeting to welcome everyone like I normally do, will they be seeing me, or how's that going to work?
So the presenter will be able to be seen, but those who are participating, those who are listening in will not, well, you won't see their screen, but there will be like a hand raised type of question or a chat room where people will be allowed to ask questions. Some, many of you have been part of webinars. It's, it's a webinar-type format.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item fifteen, additional public comments not listed on the agenda. I will ask our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak or any email requests.
Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, do we have anybody on the line? If there are, this would be the time, uh, to go ahead and speak to any item not listed on the agenda. Hearing none, I will close public comments. And with that, we are adjourned. So, thank you, everyone, for good meeting, good evening. And everybody stay safe and stay strong out there, and we'll see you soon.
Yes. Thank you.